I can barely move.
So that was the actual Ross?
I can barely move, but...
Not very often.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
And then they did. I have a picture.
It looks great, Greg.
I didn't get them all.
Came out looking good.
But they put in all these... Timbers. See, I didn't have any of that. It was a great thing. I went bottom beard.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you for that. Really, really appreciate it.
There's still some at the house when you're dropping by.
I'll stop by.
Swing by in the alley and pick up a couple.
I don't drink beer, I told you.
I know, I know. I'll take them off your hands, don't worry. Ah, see, it works.
We can make notes.
Alright. I'll be there tonight, Vicky.
To the public and council, I'm going to call this special meeting to order. This is Monday, September 10th, 2018, 5:30, 1:00 PM. City Council is meeting for one agenda item tonight. Please take roll call, clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Members Sierra?
Present.
Member Berantyne?
Present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Mayor Protem Russell?
Present.
Member Wink?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. So, the discussion and action items for night have to do with the city manager resignation and a selection process for both the interim period after the October 3rd date. It is the 3rd, right? And then for some kind of interim process and then on to a hiring of a new city manager. When I... we heard this last week, I had a number of meetings on and off with folks in the city to find out what our... what the process is, what is our responsibility. I've sent you what you... what we discovered and then asked Director Maria Gonzalez if she would put some things together on various ways that we could respond to the situation at hand in terms of filling positions. And so she created a PowerPoint that you have in front of you and I'm sorry that it wasn't done by Friday, but this is the best we could do. It's best to have a conversation now and get it going. And if we need to make a decision tonight, we certainly can. And being in here makes it possible for us to do that more easily and have a role... have the voting done as we traditionally do in a regular meeting. So, this is the slides... a set of slides that appear on the screen for the public and then we have hard copies here in front of us. But the discussion objectives tonight for us would be to discuss a process for selecting an interim city manager, discuss a process for selecting a full-time city manager, and then discuss the timelines for both processes. Options for an interim manager that were called together through different perspectives from folks who've been through this before are number one is to hire a management firm to manage the city until a new city manager is hired. The process for that is there are a number of firms around town, around the state, that actually provide managers for all kinds of industries and they would probably search for someone that's done some things in the public sector. It's not usually totally a public sector-oriented firm. That's one option. Second one is to contract with a recruitment firm to locate an interim manager. So that would be like hiring a headhunting recruitment firm. That could take some time, usually several weeks, but there are some apparently that do it on a very short term, try and expedite it. The third thing would be to work with the ICMA senior advisors. We're a member of ICMA and it is an organization that has assembled, I think now, six senior advisors that are former city managers, maybe city attorneys even, who have retired. And there are folks who are willing to assemble themselves in different ways as a volunteer... as volunteers to actually help cities go through a process like this and look for an interim for us. So, I spoke very briefly with the president... or with one of the senior advisors who said that they've done this before. They would vet three or four names of folks that they know in the city... or in the state of Colorado who know the area well and would be currently available. If you've heard the term before, they're known as Range Rovers. And there are some that just travel around and do this and with no intent to become the city manager, but instead just to help in a time of transition. Number four is to work with our CML Executive Director Sam Mamet to identify candidates. Actually, it relates to number three. Usually ICMA works in conjunction with CML to help with identifying people. So, really, the third and fourth is sort of together. But we could just decide to also have just Mr. Mamet come up with some names of people he knows and then we would take resumes from them, have them sent through HR, and then we would pick those that we want to interview. The fifth one would be just basically to have HR advertise for an interim manager and take resumes just straightforwardly. And then a final one would be to appoint an acting city manager from the directors group. I know that some of us got an email today suggesting someone. So far, I've asked city attorney and manager Keck and our HR director if anyone else... anyone's come forward saying they would like to do this. No one has. As a matter of fact, everyone has said they do not want to do it. However, Acting Deputy City Manager Dorothy Hargrove is willing to be the acting deputy city manager through this process and provide support as someone who's knowledgeable about the city. So she would prefer to be in the second role and help with all the internal kind of work while an interim director manager was chosen. So, that's the most recent and I asked Dorothy just a few minutes ago, is she okay with me saying that publicly? And she said yes. So that's the options for interim. Let me go on to the next and then let's go back. Possible elements for an interim city manager profile. These are just ideas that have been suggested. We might want to be looking for someone not interested in the permanent position, or maybe we do, but we need to talk about that, whether we want to entertain someone as an interim who might also be permanently interested in the position. A proven public administration experience. We might want to talk about how many years we want to have from someone in their background, experiencing... experienced managing similar sizes of public entities, understanding of labor, need to be immediately available, and ability to understand and present the 2019 city budget, of course, with the support of staff support. So, then the next one would be after we determine that, the city manager selection. I'm going to go through these quickly because we need to come back to the interim. That's probably most important at hand. So the options for selecting a permanent manager, hire an executive search firm to run a national search. That's what we did when Manager Sears left and we had an interim going on and then did a search firm to hire Manager Keck. We could instruct HR to run the search and do it all internally and we could do a combination of the two. And there may be another option that you might be thinking of tonight and we'll entertain that in a minute. The executive search firm options, the search for the attorney, which was a process was similar to the manager, was $27,000. Potential search firms that have been used before that have been helpful, they're listed there. All of them work specifically with government entities and looking for city managers. So, let's go back to this one. First of all, are there any questions about what I proposed before, sort of as a general way to kick off the conversation? Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. That sixth option, what does it take to appoint? Is that a consensus vote or is that a majority of council?
I believe it's a majority. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. So, we have a list of options for the interim manager. We then have a list of possible elements for the interim profile. And I'm wondering regarding that bulleted list of six items, what constituted the derivation of these six items? So, my thought is... to not be conspicuous... inconspicuous. My thought is that did we do any even preliminary or perfunctory review of data available from municipalities in our position across the country in the last few years? You know, segmenting on size and certain other factors about our city that would relate to these other cities and see what in their position of needing an interim manager were... you know, does this come from that? Is there some research behind this or did we pull this out of our heads?
This came from a couple of conversations, mostly with ICMA and with CML as to what other cities have done, yeah.
Oh, very good.
And also internally, what folks who have done manager or Director Gonzalez and what she has done in the past there. It's not an exhaustive list by any means. They're just important elements that I think people suggested should be considered.
You're not making that up?
Yeah, I'm not making it.
Okay.
No.
Point of information, conversations between who?
I had a conversation with Craig Cassian, I think is his name, with ICMA. And I believe that Manager or Director Gonzalez has had conversations with several people within this field. If you... if you want to speak to her directly, but she's willing to come forward.
Was it just you or was it?
Yes, it was just me.
Was it just you or was it both the leadership? Was Council Mayor Protem Russell part of this as well?
No, she wasn't.
Alright, thank you.
The city... the... Mr. Cassian called me by phone on Saturday, so we had an email out to him and that's why this is delayed. Just trying to get as much information as we can. I did... did call Mayor Protem Russell several times in the process and we did not connect Manager... Director Gonzalez, who don't... probably you'd need to come to the microphone. Oh, no, you have one there, good, thank you, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Well, the question largely is can the whole of the audience hear you sometimes?
Okay, can everybody hear me?
I mean online, etc.
Okay. So, basically, yes. The mayor talked to some of the people. I have talked to some of the firms, but that's why I have some notes in there. Also talked to the ICMA people as well and that's what other cities have done. We did a lot of research, not only me, but I also have another member of staff in HR that has done recruiting for local municipalities and districts. So that's where the information come from.
Also, a point of information is I know that several people in the audience might have gotten this impression as I did from some conversations that happened before. Could you please clarify whether you as a director are staying with the city of Inglewood or not?
Yes, I'm staying with the city of Inglewood. I have no plan to go anywhere. I don't know where that rumor came from.
The information that was done at a study session might have misled some people and I appreciate your clarifying that, thank you. You're in the business for understanding that rumors can cause a problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I don't have any problem.
So I am grateful for you clarifying it, thank you very much.
Thank you for clarifying any rumors. Councilmember Berantyne, did you have anything else? No?
Well, the additional information that I'm needing here is the contract with our current city manager and what process we do for the next 30 days as well as information on whether our current assistant city manager is still on payroll at all.
I don't believe that we have any assistant city manager. That's why we have an acting deputy city manager.
Oh, that was a question for the HR person. Is our current city assistant city manager still receiving any compensation?
I believe he's under contract and I don't know.
Okay.
He was doing some stuff with the budget, but he's not on the payroll.
Is he under contract? And if he's under contract, then is he receiving money or he's just under contract?
I... that's something that I don't do. As I said, he's not an employee of the city. He's contracting and consulting for the budget presentation and I think that's done. I can check with finance and come back to you, but again, he's not an employee of the city and he's not getting money through payroll.
Currently, then, he's not being paid? That's a...
He's not being paid. Again, he's not an employee of the city and he's not on the payroll.
He's just under contract. And then is... can we get a contract... a copy of the contract with the current city manager so that we know what... where our obligations are under the 30 days and what we're all supposed to be doing here?
That's not a problem. I'll get you a copy, yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Actually, there is a PDF. I'll send it to Mayor Olson and she can send it to everybody.
I thought that we received that last week already. There was a question.
There was an open request, requesting that contract, so that's what I know. There is a... there is a PDF already with the contract on it. That's what I say, I can send it to you as soon as I go back to my office and you can distribute it to all the members.
But only one person on this council is... was part of that hiring process. I think it would be important for us to have it in front of us. If we could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, as I said, I mean, as soon as we finish here, I'll go up to my office, send it to you and you can distribute it to all the members.
Thank you. Please, please actually send it to... let's... can we send it to Stephanie Carlisle that she can distribute it to us?
You have it on the open... opening request. So you can send it to all...
That'd be helpful.
You can send it to them because it's already out there.
We'll send it now.
Thank you. Councilmember Sierra?
Regarding these six options, do we happen to know what the costs are to each? And I'm guessing they're not all mutually exclusive there. We can do three of the six if we have to.
Right, so the cost of... let me go back. Hiring a management firm, that firm we would just pay straight out. Do you want to go through this list and tell what you think the cost would be? I mean, we may have to do it together.
Again, it will be appreciations. I haven't gotten any cost yet, but I can tell you by experience. I didn't...
Just let her... yeah, finish.
You can...
No, let her finish.
Go ahead, please.
So, again, I'm going to go by experience. The most expensive one will be hire a management firm because we will have to pay the salary of the person plus the commission. So if you think about a temp agency, when you pay somebody $14, you ended up paying them $21 because you have to... the management firm will make money and they have to pay the salary of the person, okay? So that will be the most expensive option that we have. If we contract a recruitment fee firm, that will be paying a fee not the same that we pay for a long-term position, but it will be a very hefty fee. The norm is between 10% and 15% of commission on top of whatever we're going to pay that interim manager. I don't have the cost of ICMA and CML. We haven't had a serious conversation, but maybe the mayor can help on that.
Those would be free. They do not charge anything. They volunteer to do this and they're very glad to help us.
So that's a... that's a very easy-to-do fee, since it's zero. Obviously, HR, it doesn't have any cost associated. We will do the posting like we do any other position, so there is no cost associated with that either. And appointing an acting city manager from the director group is probably the cheapest one because we will be appointing somebody that is already on the job. So we will have two... two positions for the price of one, okay? So we will do acting pay. We will increase their salary a little bit while they are interim manager, but we will save the whole rest of the salary of a interim manager. So that's what I can tell you about cost. I can probably prepare a cost analysis a lot more formal than this one, but it will depend on what options you're looking at.
Councilmember Sierra, does that answer?
It does.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
So my question is precisely that and I would actually like to see more detail than what was just provided. And thank you for... I know that we're operating under time... timeframes that are a little bit curt here or abbreviated and trying to do our best. I'm a little cautious about always looking for the least expensive option. Sure, I don't want to fling, you know, citizen money here and there and everywhere. However, I'd like our chosen city manager and interim manager and all these positions filled and filled well and filled for the long term and the good of the city and, you know, that might not be the cheapest... that might not be a result of choosing the cheapest option. So I... I hope citizens can understand my saying this, but I would absolutely love for this kind of decision, I would like to see some more formal financials. And there are other details, other metrics beyond just the dollar amounts as well that that add. There should be some matrix by which we can compare with a little bit more detail, I think, then we're not bombarding you with questions and we can think more strategically about what we're... this is a huge decision. These are huge decisions for huge positions for the city. So, yeah, thank you for sharing what you just shared a minute ago, but I would certainly... I don't mind whittling down the list here today, but I would need to see figures. And I guess that's the objective of the evening, I hope it is.
Yes, that's the objective, so thank you. It's really helpful. I think what we're trying to do is get as much information out there right away so we can begin to decide how we want to go about this. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. For the options for the interim city manager, I'm curious about which one of these six options we think would be the shortest timeline?
Obviously, number six will be the shortest timeline because we already have the person... I mean, we only have one candidate. So, that will be a very easy... easy position. The only one that is willing to do it is Dorothy. Thank you, Dorothy. And I know she has the backing of a lot of the directors. So that will be the shortest one. We can do it immediately if we want to. So that's the shortest time for it.
Okay, so I'm confused because I thought you said you would not be the acting city interim, but you would be the acting city manager...
Deputy.
Deputy city manager. So perhaps there's a misunderstanding here.
Point of information, if you want to respond, that's great, but I'd appreciate it if you'd come forward so that it's on record.
That is absolutely fine. Point of information is to ask questions, not to give information and interrupt, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
I indicated it would be my preference to remain as acting deputy city manager throughout this process.
So you are not entertaining being the interim city manager, replacing Mr. Keck for the short term?
Correct, it would not be my preference.
Right. So, number six is no longer an option unless someone else comes forward. If we, as a council, decided we want to send a letter to everyone or to choose certain ones that you would like to ask to entertain it, that's a possibility as well. I did not do that. I just simply was trying to gather information for our meeting today so we could get the process going. I am not...
Thank you.
...in any decision-making. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Ms. Hargrove, if I may?
Yeah.
Ms. Hargrove, if I may? Thank you, I appreciate it. You indicated that's not your preference. If duty were to call, we're 23 days out, 22 days out. Let's say we got to that point and we hadn't filled that position. If we reached that point, would you be willing to serve the city in that capacity?
If necessary, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Clarification, anything else, Member Martinez?
So, let's say that option number six is off the table. Then what is the second timeliest option? Would that be three and four or five? Okay, three and four.
I mean, again, this is people that already know the local retired city managers in the area, so it will be very easy for them to identify a candidate that will fit or needs and it will be vouched for them. So it is a two-pronged approach to this. They will look for somebody that they can recommend and put their knowledge and their experience behind. And again, they already have candidates that they're thinking of that could do the job. So that will be the fastest one. All the other three will depend on what the market is doing. And we are in a very hot market employment-wise, but I can no guarantee the amount of time that it will take with a hiring... with a manager firm or with, you know, a recruiting firm or we doing the recruiting. It may take a week, but it may also take six months. We don't know what the response is going to be, so that's unknown.
Thank you. Acting city manager or acting... I'm sorry. Deputy city manager, thank you for standing here and if we need to call you up again, we will.
I had a question for her.
Alright, one more. Let's... anybody else? Councilmember Berantyne, go ahead.
I apologize for... you've been put in a kind of odd situation because apparently you've had conversations with the mayor, but not with all of council. We are not aware of what process has been used to reach out to any of the other directors or how you were reached out to. So, I realize that this puts you on the spot and I apologize for that. I don't want to make necessarily an assumption that you're being put on the spot, that it's just you. I would like to know what the process is as well, but I do appreciate that you've made yourself available and understand the position that you're doing here. It was... Never mind, I'm not going to ask the question, but I do appreciate you making yourself available for this and the limitations that you put on it and I'm sure that you understand the process.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Does anyone else that's got their light on?
Okay.
I did want to say one thing. Go ahead and sit down, Director Martinez. So, on... apparently last week, we didn't all... maybe we knew that... some of us might have known that manager or Director Hargrove was being asked to step up and help the city manager some more and then apparently she'd been formally asked and given a title on Friday, which happened to be right before I had a meeting with her about a park meeting. So, she's been given the official title of acting deputy city manager. And it was at that point that I said, is she wanting, as she expressed, and that was the full disclosure of it and that was it. So tonight, when I asked again, just because we did receive an email today suggesting that she would be one of the best, I asked her if she wanted me to make anything public so that you all could hear it and that's why I said what I said. All I'm doing here tonight is trying to help gather information so we can make some good decisions together. I do not... I am not the decision-maker here, I'm one of seven. So, Mayor Protem Russell?
So, who had the discussion with all of the directors? I mean, how many directors do we have?
Right in now. I'd never counted before.
We used to have nine, so we'll see. I think we might have.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I never counted them before.
That is okay.
While she's doing that, I can tell you that I did not.
You already said that, that's why I want to know who did it.
Eight.
Eight, okay. And did... who contacted and were all eight of them contacted?
No, we haven't done any inquiries before tonight. I mean, we had had informal conversations, but there is nothing that I've done in the...
Oh, so no one came forward, is what you're saying?
Nobody came forward, nobody. I mean, having informal conversations among directors, I can tell you right here, right now, I don't want the job, nor I have the experience to do the job, okay? I cannot run the city. So, I'm one of the directors and I can tell you, I cannot do it. I will be doing the city at this service.
Okay. I'm not sure we were asking?
Yeah.
Again, there has not been any formal conversation or process done to pick a deputy director... I'm sorry, an interim director, city manager, not director, I'm sorry.
Point of clarification, I believe the mayor just said that there was a formal process and that Dorothy Hargrove was put in Friday as the interim deputy.
She is the deputy... acting deputy city manager, which is the city manager assistant.
Okay, and who... who did that?
Eric.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So she has been put in the position. And again, one of the reasons why is we need continuity, we need to assign signatures for the bank, we need to assign signature for the paperwork. We need to have that position in place so somebody can sign and the city can keep functioning if we go past the time that Eric is here.
And then again, for clarification, currently, right now, we have a city manager and per his contract, we're for the next 30 days. So currently, right now, we already have... okay, thank you.
Correct. Very good clarification. Mayor Protem Russell, I think, do you still have?
I had another question or comment. Actually, I do have a comment. I'm very concerned that all of council has not been notified. You knew on Friday or Thursday, whatever day it was, and you didn't notify the rest of council. And to be real honest, I was never notified. I was never invited into any of these processes for discussion. You were angry at me last Tuesday night after the meeting and I feel like you haven't wanted to talk to me, so...
I'm willing to respond to that. I called you several times, texted you several times, set up a specific time to talk with you and you didn't answer the phone, so...
The only... no, you did not set up a specific time to call me. I happened to be at an MRI with somebody at the time you called. I called you back later, I was busy that entire day. You did call... you told me that you would... you texted me and said, "I'll call you at lunchtime." I never heard from you. I just want to know that there is going to be communication going forward. I think part of the problem that is going on here is there's lack of communication with the council. This council is supposed to be doing this process together and we don't have all the information that we need and...
Councilmember... Mayor Protem, I appreciate that. I believe I sent exactly what I've known all the way through. I sent everyone everything on Friday or on Thursday when I called the special meeting. That's all I knew. I said I would be gathering information with the city... with the director of HR and getting information for us for tonight and that's all I did.
Alright, thank you.
No one responded in an email to me saying, "Is there anything more? Could I help? Could I..." Nothing more, that's all I did. Could I, nothing more, that's all I did. All I'm doing is trying to help get the information for tonight. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but I found that from the information from the city attorney and others, that if we did want to make a decision, we ought to be in here. That's all I'm doing. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. I certainly don't want to doubt this council's ability to get things done, but we are 22 days out. In terms of strictly org chart, if Eric departs on October 3rd and we have not found a replacement, it does default to acting deputy assistant manager, acting city manager Hargrove, correct?
Acting deputy city manager is the title, I believe that they gave. Thank you for...
And that is correct.
Long word, long sort of title.
Perfect, that's what I need to know, thank you.
Well, point of clarification on that, that is not just the position. I mean, it's not just the next director that would be in that position. It is because the city manager put her in that position on Friday.
I understand that.
Right. But that also should be the, it may be that this council decides it's what decision we should make on how to handle that piece of it, and that's the information that I think kind of didn't get communicated very well. So that's something we need to discuss.
And that would be a separate conversation, then. Are we saying that even this position right now isn't locked in stone?
The acting deputy? No, it's a current position that, it's acting, which makes it an interim kind of position, but they gave her the acting title instead of interim. And maybe the HR director could tell us if there's, from my understanding, it's a short term with no end yet.
It's an acting position that is active, as the mayor said, and if you go to the appendage on your package, if you look at Article 7, Section 52 of the Englewood Home Rule Charter, letter B says appoint, suspend, this is the city manager powers and duties, appoint, suspend, transfer and remove city employees unless otherwise provided. So it is a personal decision, and the reason why we do it now is because there is a lot of knowledge that this person has to gain in order for us to keep conducting the city business, like what contracts are pending and what needs to be paid. It's not about making council decisions, it's about keeping the city running, because if we run out of time and we don't have an interim, we won't have anybody that can sign the checks, for example.
Of course, and I appreciate the procedural function that goes along with that. To that point, then, so city manager Keck made that appointment last Friday. Is that, should that have been done by council, then? If it's councils, if that's at the will of council, can change it. Should we have made that decision, or did the city manager have made that decision?
The city manager makes a decision according to the charter. I mean, he makes the appointment of his staff, that's what he's doing. He's just making her the acting deputy city manager.
But, and city council still has the right to change that appointment?
That, I will defer to the city attorney, but it's on the charter that way.
No, the city council does not change the deputy city manager. What has been inferred is that when the city council decides whom it would like to serve as interim, that it can choose to skip over the acting deputy city manager and choose another member of staff who council would have better knowledge or belief would have better skills at managing the city than the deputy city manager that was appointed by your city manager.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding correctly, council does not have the right to change that appointment. That is incumbent upon the city manager to do so.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that I would view it the same way, so just point of information, but...
Is that point of information, or was there a question?
No, that's point of information, I don't read it.
Member Questa, did you have more that you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Member Wink, I believe you might have been next.
Thank you, Mayor. So my decision on page three, slide options, titled Options for Interim Manager, I would like us to go forward in the effort to come to some kind of decision here, so we can move on with our evening. I would like to see some more robust descriptions of the four, the first four options on that list, and maybe my fellow council members can weigh in and disagree and agree such that we can come to a decision on moving forward with that page. That's what I feel at this point.
Can I ask clarification? Okay, what type of data would you like to see? Because I can come up with pages and pages of data, so.
Yeah, not pages and pages, certainly.
You want to see the cost, you already told me that.
Yeah, and even your best estimate, Director Gonzalez, you don't have to know everything, of course, but your best estimate in terms of the cost, I think we need to know the timeframe. People asked about time, cost, maybe the level of effort, that's the non-financial effort, as well as just involvement of members of human bodies and minds to do the work. How many people who, how much time it's going to take, how much it's going to cost that those people, I think something like that would help me, my colleagues can weigh in. So that's what I think about that page. Do you want more, Mayor?
Nope, that's helpful.
I can comment on the other pages in that sort of way.
No, let's do one at a time, because I think this is, first, we need to decide how do we want to go about this, and what more data do we have to make a decision. Councilmember Martinez.
I'm leaning toward option three and four because it is, there's no fee, and the timing will be more kind of rapid. We're already counting down the clock on filling this position, and I think it's really important to focus on this first, as opposed to what we're going to do for our permanent city manager position. I would prefer to go with option three and four, which is ICMA working within conjunction with CML, because, but I want to confirm that there's no fee for that, and just confirm, excuse me, the timeframe.
I have a point of information regarding what Member Martinez just said. This is excellent, Amy. So if I know how long it will take, Director Gonzalez, to do what I suggested, again, because of time, I might change my, what I just said. So that's a very good point.
Why don't we hear everyone's perspective on this? We're not voting, we're simply discussing, so you have a set of data.
But if she can turn around what I asked for in one day, then I say that, but if it's going to be four weeks, then I will say that.
It won't be four weeks, but it won't be a day either. I will have to find reputable management firms that have experience with public entities, okay? I haven't done that. The firms that you have in the back, in the last page, are firms that do full-time recruiting, okay? So I don't know how long that's going to take. I can tell you that ICMA, CML already have candidates, so it's not going to take any time to do that, okay? And I confirm that there is no fee for that, but I will have it in writing for you probably tomorrow. So that, I can have it by the end of the week. That's my best estimate. I cannot tell you that I will have all the information that you asked for tomorrow. That will be very, very hard. Because again, I have to find somebody that does recruiting for an interim, that's a very specialized, and it is an interim for public, for a public entity, which is even more specialized, so it will be hard to find somebody that we can trust. Because the problem is, I will find people that recommend candidates, but it's going to be hard to find somebody that is reputable doing that, okay?
Thank you.
Now, responding to your comment, Member Martinez, I will also recommend that we go with that option, okay? Again, this is people that know what they're doing, they know the candidates already, and they will put their names and their recommendation behind those people. That will be the fastest, most effective way to get somebody that is vouched by six people that have a lot of experience. So that's my professional recommendation as the HR director of the city, is to go with option three and four. I put all the options out there for you to discuss it and for you to be informed, but that is my professional recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Russell.
On three and four, who, do they just send one candidate if you call them, or do they send a group of candidates and we interview all of them and we'll have profiles on them?
It will be a selection process. They will send us the candidates, and we will get some sort of resume with what they have done and their recommendations, and it will be the council decision. We will interview them, it will be an interview process. We have to set it up, and you will have as much time as you want with them, so we can make an inform, you can make an informed decision.
Okay, and then one other question. If we appointed an acting city manager from the directors' group, I mean, would it be possible for city council to interview them, or who would approach all of them and say city council is interested in pursuing that? Because if we go with three or four, we are going to pay, whoever we hire, we're paying a salary for them.
Yes.
Whereas if we have one of the directors, they would get a percentage increase to fill in that position.
Yep. So we can do the same process. We can contact it, I can do it, or we can have all the directors here, one-on-one, meeting with all the council, and you can interview them and ask them questions. Or again, as I said, we can have a formal request, I can meet with them, ask them if they're interested in the job, and then submit it to you and say, okay, this person is interested, you do want to interview them. We can have a combination of the two. We can, you can interview whoever candidate the ICMA and CML provide us, and you can interview any director that come forward that want to do the job, and you can compare. That we can do, I mean, that's what we're here tonight, to discuss what is, that we want to do. My main concern is to pick the right person for the job, but also keep the city running, okay? Because that would be a disaster if we don't have somebody in place to, as I said, keep business going. And even, right now, it's critical because we're going through the budgeting process.
Right, well, and I mean, it is going to move forward. The city is not going to be put on hold regardless of what happens, but I think my suggestion is to move forward with three, four, and perhaps six also.
Councilmember Sierra.
Yeah, since we're talking about an interim city manager, my preference would be to go with number three and four, possibly six as well, if there's anybody that's interested in the position. Let's use the ICMA membership that we're currently a part of and take advantage of that, so that's where I stand at this point.
I also would like to weigh in. I think we would be fine for us to send a formal letter to all of the directors out of six and just see if any of them, because they haven't been formally asked by anybody, it was quite serendipitous that acting city, deputy city manager and I had a conversation, and she said, you know, what I've told you. And then I would prefer to go with three and four. There are other cities that have gone through this process, people have called me and want to recommend names, and I've said, no, 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 I don't want to know any names, this is a council decision, please work with our HR director. And several have told me that a number of cities in the state have done this very process using ICMA, along with Sam Mamet from CML, because he's so knowledgeable in trying to come up with some people, and they were sure we were going to have four or five people right away that we can interview. One of the things that ICMA and CML can do is to filter out folks that maybe this isn't the right next best step for them. In one case, I heard that someone had just come out of a very difficult situation with their city and was jumping right into this, and they were going into another difficult situation, and they counseled with him and said, you know, do you really think you want to be doing this right now? And that person realized, no, you're right. And so there's a little bit of a filter there, but you know, if people really want to do it, they'll present the names to her. But I would be, I would be fine with six as an option to start with, and if not, then three and four, and let's get moving on it. I think the next stage of getting the permanent city manager is going to be tough and hard and a lot of work, it takes six months at least, so. Councilmember Wink, and then Berantine.
Thanks. These six options aren't mutually exclusive.
No, they aren't, so if you have another idea.
Right, so, yeah. So I think, given what was just said, then, I do believe six is, should be done regardless. It's just procedural, it's like...
I agree, as a matter of respect, I can send a letter tomorrow.
It should be protocol that we do that in any place of, yeah, business establishment, but six plus whatever everyone decides. I do have a question, or a comment for, since we've been talking about maybe post, making the decision on which of these options we pursue and how we move forward. I do feel, from my experience in the workplace, which has been long and fulfilling, that it's absolutely helpful when you, in your position as the human resources director, as well as the other director's staff members are a part of the interview process, even if we have some higher-level firm. I don't think you should be left out. I know you were sort of questioning that, maybe, but I do support that happening. I think it's important for someone in this type of position to spend significant time with the people with whom they would work so very closely. And I also want, having not been a part of a city manager interview for a municipality previously, I want to say that I hope that when council gets to meet with these candidates, that we are having something more substantial than, i.e., or e.g., one hour and a half talking with them and asking them state questions, or, I want to have a thorough kind of investigation of these people. So, I don't know what you've had before, so I don't want to critique, but I am certainly in favor of us spending something beyond the usual standard interview moment with these candidates. Thanks.
Talking ahead on the selection of the city manager, I agree with you, an hour I don't think is enough for such an important position for the city. Also, I believe in an all-inclusive interview, it should be interviewed by the staff, not only the directors, but even some of the staff, like the operators, for example, and have them weigh in, because it's going to be the representative of all of us, okay? There is another thing that is on the slides that we need to decide, if we're going to make that interim available or not to the job. Again, I will step in as an HR professional, and I will advise, this is my professional opinion, that whoever we pick as an interim, we pick him with the option to apply for the long-term position, okay? And this comes from my experience. And again, I refer back to the temp agency example, okay? There is no better interview than to have somebody working with you side by side for a number of time, okay? So we may, you know, be swift and pick the candidates that ICMA and CML provide, and we may lock out, we may found the person without even thinking about it. So if we see that that person is working out, let's leave our options open for that person to apply for the job if they are interested. So that's another consideration that I would like the council to make as a whole. If we're going to make that person, if you are the interim, you cannot apply for the position, or that's a decision that you will have to make.
Can we hold off on that conversation till we figure out what our process, if we have sort of a consensus on how to do this with these six options here, and if there's a seventh? Member Berantine, do you want to weigh in?
I think that there's a lot more information that's gone on, that you've had, that the mayor's had conversations with several people in HR and CML, and we really need to catch up and know what the process would be, what the timeline would be, if we went with either three or four. I do agree with the mayor that we need to at least reach out and make sure that there's some formal process for all of the directors, so that it's not just some kind of knee-jerk reaction and that everybody, it's more of a formal process for them to understand that they're being asked whether they would like to step into that role or not. The, all of this anecdotal information that's going on with CML and who it could be and how they operate isn't being presented to us. So I think that could be done in a very short timeframe for us to make a better decision on which one we want to go with. I think we can maybe pare it down a little bit, but we would need to have a little bit more information than just kind of what's being said anecdotally here. So some kind of process, whether the people that CML puts forward for interim, whether they are even a stock of people that are interested in the position normally in applying, or whether they just like acting as interim, and what kind of timeframe it would look like on that. So if we could get a little bit more information, I think three, four, and six are probably a way to go, as long as we also have a discussion first about the city manager's contract and where we're at, at least for the next 30 days, so that we know who's in charge and how we're handling the next 30 days that we've been given, or 27, whatever it is at this point. So the contract, I would like, I would like a little bit more information documented and provided to us on what the process would look like for the senior advisor or the executive director, search for three or four, and then to see what we would do for number six, what that would look like, and I'm sure that could happen pretty quickly.
So again, I ask, what type of information are you looking for specifically? Because I have what Member Wink asked for, what else besides what she asked for, would you like to see?
Let me see if I could summarize, and you can tell me if I'm right or not.
Well, I think I understand your question. You, we've had a lot of conversation going back and forth.
No, we haven't. I think you have some assumptions that we've had a lot of conversations. As a matter of fact, we've had very little for this very reason, that I knew I would get up here Monday night and be sort of attacked because you think I've had all these conversations. So I've been trying to...
Nobody is attacking you, and I'm not finished with my question for the director first. You offered to go ahead and do a synopsis for me, and I respectfully am declining, you don't need to do that.
Go ahead, continue to ask her the question.
And Mayor, nobody is attacking you. We have had a discussion that some things were checked out, how CML would do it, what kind of people they would do. It's just anecdotal at this point, that's all. That's all that I'm saying. I realize there's sensitivities here that don't need to be here. I really would prefer a little bit more of a formalized document on what it would look like for ICMA to do the, identify potential candidates. What would that look like? As it is now, we just have one sentence, and maybe other people have had a little bit more information about what that might look like. I'd like to see something formalized in what that process looks like, what the process for the CML Executive Director search to identify a potential candidate, what does that mean? What is the process for that? And then, what would you have be the process for appointing an acting city manager from the directors group and doing what the mayor already suggested about making sure that everybody is officially asked with some process? Along with the current city manager's contract and how we handle the next 30 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
The contract has been sent. It's in your email box now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm not being difficult. I just want to know what is it that you're looking for? Because what ICMA does is that they are six members on a senior council. They sit down together, and they have this pool of people that they know do interim or are without a job, and they go through that pool of people and give us three or four or five names, or how many names they have.
They do that fairly regularly. I'm sure they have a process that they could provide to us, that we think within 30 days we could provide you. Here's the timeline that we do. We have a six-panel people. We have about this many people that we deal from. That's a process. That would be a documented process.
If you let me finish my answer.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say. I will contact them and ask them to give me a description of their process, because it's not my process. Now, you asked me how long that will take. That is out of my hands, because I don't know how long it will take them to get that process on paper for you. For the appointing an acting city manager, again, I will send a letter, formal letter tomorrow, asking the directors who is interested on filling up that position to all our directors, and ask them to give me an answer by the close of business on Wednesday.
Okay.
And I can send the council their replies as soon as I get them, okay? If there is somebody that is interested, we will ask them to put their resume together, and if we want to compare them with the ICMA or whatever option the council chooses to go with, they will follow exactly the same process, because that's what the law says. We have to follow the same interviewing and recruiting process for everybody. So, that's the answer to you. I mean, that's how specific I can be.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to keep us moving. I think we've heard...
I need to ask one more question, and that is, are we going to have some kind of list of what we expect from the interim city managers, so that we know what we're expecting?
Yes, that's on the next page of what we will talk about, along with the manager description. Thank you. Let's move on. Mayor Protem Russell.
Mayor, can I ask if it would perhaps be possible to have Sam Mamet come to the study session next week, and perhaps somebody from ICMA also?
Surely. I'm sure that if they're available, one of them could come. One of the things that the fellow from ICMA told me is that these six senior advisors are all retired, traveling, visiting grandchildren, because that's what they do now, which he was doing this week. Apparently, that's why he couldn't come tonight, but maybe he's available. I have tried to direct everything now to our HR director, so that she gets all the information and can send it to us. And I don't know if he's been in contact with you with anything or not, but...
Oh, yeah, but I can ask.
But I think he's...
I can ask them to come next week.
He's out of the country, actually, probably. So, yes, I think that's a great idea. All tonight was, was to come up with ideas, and we're creating our own process, because this hasn't been done before. We've had in the past, recent past, our city manager left with a deputy manager in place, and it was easy. We just moved in, and then we did the search. So, this is new. We're creating it ourselves. It's fine how we create it. Councilmember Martinez, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I'm just concerned about the timing of this, where you keep talking about 30 days, but that was 30 days from like last Tuesday. So, I think we need to move really quickly on this. Also, just thinking about timing, if we need to have more special meetings, and we need to set interview times for the interim, we need to act pretty quickly here, because the 20-something days is going to be here before we know it. So, just putting that out there.
Point of emphasis, Mayor.
Councilmember Questa.
Just for what you just said, is that in the past, we've had no one in the position of the assistant, we've had somebody in the position of the Assistant City Manager. We just got done being notified that we have somebody in as the Assistant City Manager currently. So, in that case, if that's the way you're viewing it, why are we going through it?
The Acting Deputy City Manager has informed us that she does not want to be in the interim role right now. However, when Gary Sears left, Mike Flaherty, who was Deputy City Manager at the time, was willing to step in, and that was the difference. So, we didn't have to worry about this phase of it, and everyone was in agreement with it on council at the time.
So, it's not whether they're appointed in the position, but whether they're willing to do it or not.
Thank you for the clarification. Member Questa.
Thank you. My primary objective during this meeting at least was to get an understanding of the organizational chart and the contingency plan in place. If we missed October 3rd, which is 23 days from now, and city manager departing, it does now, it's pretty clear that Acting Deputy City Manager Hargrove will step in unless Eric were to make a different appointment prior to his departure. If that is the case, which is my understanding, if we go past 23 days without filling this spot, which seems like within the realm of possibility, I'm certainly willing to schedule as many special meetings as we need to, to get this filled prior to that. But I would look for option six to start running immediately, and then concurrently going on three and four as well. Thank you. And I appreciate the fiscal point that you made on number six, Mayor Protem.
Thank you for... It sounds to me like everyone's in agreement to go ahead, and the HR director will send out a letter to all of the directors in the city to allow for them to put their names forward. And if no one comes forward, then we move on to a combination of three and four. We can pursue having one of the gentlemen that is in this group, either CML or the other, come to a special meeting on Monday night next week. Are you willing to meet at 5:30 to do that, so that we have a little bit more time, given that we have so many other things on the agenda that night?
5:30 next week?
Would that work for everyone?
I'm willing.
Yes.
Okay, no, no, it's... Okay. So, the other thing that is an interim, though, if we do get one or two directors from the city that come forward, do you want them to be considered separately? And then if we don't have agreement on one of those, then move on to three and four? Or do you want to have them be considered as part of the whole group? Member Wink.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, what would be the timeframe for, right, so for us to notify all our director's staff, for them to respond in a way that fully represents their executive and et cetera, et cetera, you know, executive and administrative qualifications appropriately, such that we can evaluate them quickly, to give us time to go back to three and four after they do that, which is why I want it to happen a little more concurrently?
So...
Let's hear from others then to... Member Martinez, do you have anything to add on that?
I would like to move the paths concurrent, so appointing and asking the current staff if they are interested concurrently with the ICMA and CML options. So, I would like to go in tandem together.
All right. Member Sierra.
Same there.
I would as well. Any other objections to that? HR Director, let me...
Well, that's fine.
Director Gonzalez.
I will have an answer probably by Wednesday, if there is any director that is willing. And then I will have, if we have anybody that step up and want to take the role, and we'll have them prepare their credentials, their resume, ready for 5:30 on Monday, so we can take a look at ICMA and CML, and take a look at whoever have come forward and be willing to step into the role.
I just wanted... City Clerk has a comment to make.
I just wanted to let you know, there's not currently a study session scheduled next week before the meeting, so do you still want to do 5:30, or just basically structure it as a regularly scheduled study session?
I... Do you think we need more 5:30?
I still think we should do 5:30, because then we have plenty of time.
Take time.
Okay, no problem.
Is there a reason why there was no study session scheduled?
We didn't have enough on that, at this point, seemed appropriate on that night.
Right.
We certainly tomorrow could have a mayor-manager meeting, and the city manager might tell us we actually have an item. So, I don't know. So, tomorrow, let's decide, let's agree that it'll be 5:30 unless you receive further notice.
And will it be a study session or a special meeting? I just want clarification.
I think a study session for what we...
The only reason why we're in here is because if you wanted to move on something tonight and make a vote, I wanted it to be clear, so we're not... It's all, that's all it was, is just to be convenient. I would suggest we do the same thing next week, just for time-wise, because we may come to a conclusion next week, and let's move forward and say, and we do have to make a decision, that we're going to do ICMA.
Point of information, we have a council meeting, though. So, anything that we do...
That's right.
We could just bring to council.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else related to meeting at 5:30, City Clerk, that we need to know? It'll be posted. We'd had enough time this week to do it, right?
Yes, correct.
All right. I think... Councilmember Martinez.
Do we need to make a motion on those three items?
City Attorney, do we need to make a motion on this at all? It's just, we didn't come to any kind of a final...
No. You haven't taken any formal action.
Okay, great. All right. Is everyone, any other comments from anyone?
Is there any reason now, if we're looking at item six and three and four, I believe, was the consensus, concurrently, does it cost that much more to add number five as well? That way, we can... I mean, I know each submission of an add costs money, of course, and time to develop it.
Let's talk about time. It's not about cost, monetary cost, it's about time.
You do?
The issue is about time. It's not how much will it cost. Again, they're pretty close in cost. I don't think there's going to be an added cost to do either one of those. But the first thing that we have to do, and that's what I was going to tell you, I will review the job description for the current job description that we have for the city manager. That includes what is on the appendix as well, and send it to council. So, if you want to add anything that is not there, or something that is missing, that's the first thing that we need to have, to be able to post the position. So, it will add time, as, like, we have the candidates for the directors, and ICMA will be able to provide candidates immediately, starting next week if we decide that. It's going to take more time for us to be ready, because I need to have a job description.
Understood.
So, it's just a matter of time.
It seems like it's more than time. It's less bang for our buck to do it that way and sort of go fishing, rather than use a bucket of ready fish that we know about.
It will be more work, and it will be more...
Okay, good. Thanks. Excellent.
Take longer. Councilmember Barrantyne.
It seems like what you're saying is that the thing that would cause the problem of time is putting together the job description?
It will take more time, because it has to be a consensus as well. I mean, it's a document that you all have to decide on it. I can send it to you tomorrow, and we can have it on Monday. Now, if on Monday you hear from ICMA and CML, and you decide to go, ICMA will be able to provide you candidates probably by Friday, or by the following Monday, for you to take a look at. If we do it, me advertising, we will get the job description done, you vote on Monday, I will post the position on Tuesday, and then we have to have it open for three days, and then we have to go all, because I can tell you that we're going to get probably hundreds of resumes. So, we have to work through that hundred of resumes and come up with 10 candidates that have the qualifications and the credentials and the experience. So, it's going to take us, I mean, it'd take me a week to go through 100 resumes conscientiously. So, it will add at least one more week before we can make a decision. And as it was pointed before, we only have 22 days left before Eric departs.
Thank you. I think that we have fully supported doing what we said with six, three, and four.
And answering the question that I just...
Member Barrantyne, you are interrupting again.
I was asking a question. I would like some clarification, and I was not finished with my question, so...
She was asking a question.
You just called on me.
Continue.
Part of the concern with what Councilmember Wink brought up was going ahead and having that job description piece of it, and I would like to see that job description piece of it just for the acting city manager. And even if we have the current volunteer position go into that, that that has to happen, I think that we need to have that piece of it. So, we might not be bad off to go ahead and try and at least start that. That process has to be started anyway. So, I want to make sure that we're still intending on doing at least that beginning piece of it, whether we go ahead and go forward with advertising it or not. I think we would be ill-advised not to at least have the job description of what we are expecting, of whoever's in there. And then we can decide whether we want to move forward with putting it forward to an advertising.
I apologize if you didn't hear me. I already said that I'm going to send you the job description tomorrow for all of you to review. So, I will send it through the city clerk. I'm sorry you didn't hear me when I said that. I will send a job description for you to review. I will make sure it's an accurate job description that reflects what is in the city charter. And again, you can review and make suggestions to it, because we need the job description for whatever option we choose.
Right.
Yes, you will get that through the city clerk tomorrow.
Okay. And then that will be, I wasn't hearing that that would be part of what was given to the directors, so that, I was kind of hearing that as separated, that we were just going to see what directors might be interested, but I would like that process done, so that we have the job description and then ask them. Is that what's going to happen?
Council, I'd like all of council to weigh in this. I am very concerned that we are going to slow down this process for interim and not get to actually hiring a city manager. If we're going to spend all this time rewriting a job description, I think that's very unwise. I think we should look at it. I think that those who are interested in the job ought to be able to look at it. But let's, I would like us not to spend a lot of time on the interim job description right now. If we need to change it for the future hire, let's definitely do that. But doing that between now and next week, I would say, is ill-advised.
You said you could have it ready by, in a couple of days?
I can send you the description.
Tomorrow, she has said that several times.
I have a job description for every job in the city already. I just want you to review in case we miss something, or it's something that is not according to the code, okay? So, yeah, I would like to review. We do have a job description already on file.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, we need a job description for the interim, and we need a job description for the city manager that we pick.
Right. Thank you for sending us that tomorrow, and if we can shorten the amount of time that it might take to get that really clear, that it's final, that would be great. The second page of this, which I think we need to deal with before we move on, would be to discuss any kind of profile things that you want to add to this list here. Or do you want to wait on this discussion until Monday night of next week? Are there others? I know this just came to you, as well as to me today, so if it's, I don't believe that the next selection process is needed to make a decision tonight, given the timeframe, since you're just looking at it for the first time, but do you want to give a little bit more input into this profile on the second page of the possible elements for interim city manager? Mayor Protem Russell.
I think that we could wait on this discussion, I think, till next week and have some time to think about it.